Yep. Alright. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Frank?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Alright, consent agenda items. Item A, approve four thirteen twenty twenty council minutes. Item B, approve four thirteen twenty twenty Board of Appeals and Equalization meeting minutes. Item C, approve full-time police secretary hiring process. Item D, approve new off-sale beer three-two for Cogan's Incorporated, doing business as Cashwise Foods and Holiday. Number four zero six-three. Item E, approve twenty twenty renewal of the Joint Powers Agreement, Violent Offender Task Force. Item F, approve Joint Powers Agreement with State, City Attorney and Police Department. Item G, approve full-time police officer hiring process, and item H, approve public work seasonal hires.
I would, I would like to pull D, G, and H.
D, like in dog?
Like in dog.
E, G, and H. Somebody wanna move to approve A, B, C, E, F?
So moved, this is Beck.
Beck.
Alright, uh, Mike? This is a roll, this is a roll call vote.
Uh, yep.
Ken?
Yes.
Vic?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Alright, Mike, D, item number D, off-sale liquor, beer.
Just a quick question on that. The state was going to, uh, change that three-two liquor law to allowing strong beer in these places. Would that require them to, uh, ask for a different license at that time?
I'm not aware of...
I guess I don't know what the law, what the state will do, if they will grandfather all those in for that kinda thing or what. Cause right now, we charge more for those licenses, so.
Yeah.
That's to be ter- that I think is to be determined, Mike.
Yeah, I, I would say we don't have that answer right now.
I had thought they had passed it, but evidently they must not have.
Okay, item T?
Move to approval.
No, how about item T? We can do them all together then.
Um, under that hiring process there, are we using, uh, uh, last list of eligibility on that, or is that expired?
Dave, are you, do you, are you, I think it's expired, Mike. I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's, it's expired, um. Justin Goff took a position with Annandale, so, uh, that, that's the reason for the opening that we have.
Okay, so.
Went back to his hometown.
Alright, good for him. Uh, that's a good, nice for him. Item H.
Uh, I see there's nine on the list. How many have we hired already?
Two.
Two?
Is that over hiring for the part-time?
No.
No.
Thought we were only gonna hire ten?
No, uh, well, the one, the ones on the list right now are ones that we're asking to get the authorization for tonight, just because of the process. How many we end up hiring in the end of that process will depend upon what the state lifts as far as some of the regulations. Um, so, we have those, we had added those in the budget, um. I believe that's what we had last year in the budget too, but we never got them all hired, filled last year.
Alright. Okay, this is Beck. Before we go ahead and approve that, what kind of a budget do we have right now? Are we facing a deficit right now?
No.
Oh. Alright, somebody wanna move to approve D, G, and H?
Don't move. Frank moves.
Ken, I'll second it.
Alright, roll call vote. Mike? Uh, no. Ken?
Yes.
Vic?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Passes four to one then. Alright, regular agenda items. This is a public hearing for, uh, SB Financial Corporation Doing Business as Easy Cash USA Currency Exchange License. Please take notice that the Way Park City Council will hold a public hearing on the eighteenth day of May twenty twenty at six thirty PM or soon thereafter via teleconference to consider the currency exchange license for SB Financial Corporation. Doing Business as Easy Cash USA, located at one forty-seven Division Street, Way Park, Minnesota pursuant to Minnesota Statute fifty-three A dot four. Due to current Minnesota orders to prevent public gathering comments may be directed to the City of Way Park Council by mail at nineteen thirteen Abbey North Way Park or by email to Carla Gruny. Uh, okay. Comments will be received until four thirty PM on the eighteenth of May and will be entered into public record for the meeting dated the sixth day of May twenty twenty. It is now six thirty-six and the public hearing is now open. Did we get it?
We did not get any written or verbal comments.
And I assume everything has been taken care of with the, with the city as far as background checks and all that?
Well, it's, it's us through the state. The state has, does everything and they just need to get our O K on it.
Yeah, okay, okay, yeah, that's right, yeah.
So, the, um, the police department did not have any issues.
Okay.
That there was included.
Alright.
And this is. Post a public hearing.
Alright.
At six thirty, what is it, seven, and needs to be closed?
Six thirty-seven. Is there a second for it?
I will second it.
Okay. Alright, roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Vic?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Public hearing ends close at six thirty-seven, and then I need motion to approve or deny the, that exchange of license.
This is Vic calling. I make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Alright, roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Vic?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Alright, item B, conditional use permit, church in A-one Agro Residential District, one-five-three-eight County Road six.
I'm gonna toggle over to my screen, if that's okay.
Yep.
Give me a moment here, I'll get the attachments up and running.
I can see why they had such a tough time trying to sell that piece of property. They had South Saint Cloud on it.
Uh, council members, Mayor Miller, uh, anyone watching this now or later, this is a, uh, conditional use permit within the property. Uh, it's been marketed for, uh, some time. The intended requested use is for a church, uh, which is a conditional use permit within underlying A. Residential District, this property, the reference, it is a very far, uh, southeastern corner of town just off of, uh, Highway fifteen, uh, and U Road. Uh, the applicants currently hold services and space rented from the Saint Cloud School District. Their current congregation, the state members. They've outgrown that space, uh, and they believe that this, uh, location will give them the room that they, a little bit of room to grow. It's barely turnkey, though their purposes doesn't need really much in the way of work. Their services include Sunday and Wednesday worship services, as well as, uh, kinda standard children, youth, uh, family-oriented functions that are typical for modern churches. They submit, uh, a floor plan, as I mentioned, really, the layout of the building as it is, it's kinda, kinda a large open shop area. Uh, a number of what are currently offices. Uh, I should mention that the building is currently used as a landscaping business. So it's pretty well-suited to a church. There is an ADA compliant bathroom, so that is, uh, covered a little. Uh, anything is gonna have to be cleared through the, the building before they could undertake occupancy. Uh, we wanted to be sure that they're having those discussions ahead of time, because sometimes those costs can be surprising for folks. So they have been in contact with, uh, building official, these discussions over the past months. To their advantage, it is, uh, pretty well-suited, so not really a lot of work needed, uh, at least in the, but we would recognize that, uh, over time as their needs change, building code might enact, we have to be part of that. Uh, the, the structure does not, uh, it was deemed to not require fire sprinkling at this time under their proposal, but, uh, I note that that doesn't necessarily extend to the future as they may grow, or, or if an expansion came to place, or something changes, that can always change the, the classification as well. Access to this property is a, currently a public road. Uh, we have a application to vacate that road in as a separate request, uh, that will be reviewed, uh, shortly thereafter this request. This is one of those roads that we previously noted as being ideal for vacation due to its limited use and really only servicing two properties. That was the road down the middle and turn the property over evenly to the owners on either side. Uh, their responsibility to have their private agreement in place for use and maintenance improvements. Uh, the adjacent owner has expressed, uh, um, concern with the potential amount of traffic generated by the, not, well, not so much the traffic, but, um, they don't want there to be some effort to pave that road at, at the address of the, of a church without, uh, them being part of that conversation. Um, due to that, I'm gonna incorporate a condition, uh, to that effect in my recommendations. One note, one area of note, the parking area that is currently gravel. I'll toggle back up to, uh, aerial photo here. You can see the extent of that gravel area. Uh, the city ordinance notes that a, a conditional use permit would be a trigger for the property to have its parking hard service brought up to the standards. However, in this case, uh, due to the limit, limited access via the, the gravel, uh, what would be, be a gravel, uh, private approach? In the rural nature of the area, I would recommend that, uh, maybe granted exemption from the requirement of hard service at this time. Uh, I would recommend that be triggered, uh, in the future at any kind of new construction or expansion or plating of the property that would be required by any reductions. Uh, although, we would give specific review and consideration to those projects at that time, but, um, I would advocate for that at this time. That could be at the council's discretion, as with any of the provisions. The planning commission didn't review this request for April fourteen, uh, twenty twenty, but we, we accepted public comment at that meeting. Uh, we did not receive any comments aside from the, uh, one submitted regarding the, uh, maintenance and improvement of the road from the adjacent property owner and any information to that effect. The planning commission, uh, recommended approval of the request, uh, as recommended with, uh, the conditions as outlined, a couple of conditions that are included with your agenda came about as a discussion from the planning commission, including the, uh, uh, condition regarding the, uh, um, certification of the well or septic that they can handle the, um, the increased document load, or that it would have to be brought up to a standard that could. Uh, they have been in contact with a, uh, inspector and, uh, they haven't provided that certification yet, but it does appear that the, uh, well and septic could handle that, that load, uh, based on the use that they're proposing. So I would recommend approval of the conditional use permits, uh, and adoption of the attached resolution with the, uh, conditions as outlined in the report. With that, I'd open it up for any questions.
Hey, council, you got any comments?
This is Beck. I just have a couple of questions for John. I noticed on the, uh, exhibit A of the floor plan, um, that they've got a lot of overhead doors. Are they planning to close, are they planning to close those off and to bring that, uh, shop area up to the energy standards of the state?
I have not heard that, uh, that they intend to do so.
Interesting. Any other questions? Otherwise, we're, yeah, we can, uh, move to approve. Let's see, what are we?
Yeah, this is Frank. I'm, I approve with the, um, ten, um, conditions that were in our council packet.
Uh, there's fourteen of them. There's four on the backside of that piece of paper.
Oh, I didn't flip it over. You're right.
Is there a second?
With the fourteen conditions.
I'll second that.
Alright, roll, any further discussion? Roll call vote. Mike?
Hold it.
Ken?
Yes.
Vic?
Yes.
Oh, hold it. I had some questions.
You're about a day late and a dollar short.
I've been trying for a minute. I've been waiting. I've been yelling.
You haven't yelled.
Yes, I have.
Go ahead.
Had some question on the number of occupants. If they have a hundred and eighty people, that room gonna be big enough to survive or handle all those people? And secondly, the parking lot, where is the parking lot going? It could be, it looks awful small to be handling that many vehicles. And I'd like to change a word on number one. Uh, the last sentence where it says, "Plating of property may trigger need of hard surface parking areas at that time"? I'd like to change "may" to "will".
Well, as, as far as, uh, the, the number of people, uh, I, I have not examined the, the building code aspects. When, or, when the building official, uh, Jeff Howell reviewed it with the applicants, he, he didn't express any concern over the amount of people that would be utilizing it. I mean, understandably that, um, they probably wouldn't be able to do so under current guidelines to that, to that number. But in normal times, uh, he didn't see any issue with, with, uh, holding that number of people on the property. As far as parking, um, I don't necessarily a hundred and eighty people would each be arriving in a separate vehicle. You know, for the most part, they're, they're probably gonna be families that could, uh.
Right, so you figure eighty vehicles. That parking lot doesn't look big enough to handle eighty vehicles. But, and where is the parking lot?
The parking lot is basically the, the gravel area you're seeing here. It's, it's been, over the years, it's gra- it seems to have gradually taken its current form. Uh, it's probably a remnant of, of its township days. But, but there's, there's not a extremely well-defined parking lot. It's, you can see it's basically bound by this storage trailer here and, um, you can see kinda the perimeter here, but where Nature View Landscaping has their equipment around along the fringes. That's all to be removed as an aside.
Okay, cause I did see in some of the writing here that the neighbor had concern that if they had more cars, that they're not parking out on that private road to block the roadway out. So is it, there should be a well-defined parking lot to handle this place.
Well, and that was, I did include the condition that, uh, if, if the existing parking works for their purposes, I would see that as fine. But if an expansion is required, that, that would be a trigger of hard surfacing to me.
That's why I want that word changed "will" instead of "may".
I don't have, I don't have an issue with changing that. That's, that's fine by me.
Um, this is Frank. I don't wanna change the word. I like, I like the wording "maybe". Um, and as far as that building, Mike, just the shop alone is twenty-four hundred square feet. You can fit a lot of people, you know, considering, uh, in the building inspector's math, um, to accommodate probably two or three hundred people in a building that size.
Well, they got all those lots. They've got, uh, those have to be subtracted from me and it's work. Uh, you got overhead door, uh, lots, different storage, storm shelters, um.
Well, again, Mike, I feel it's not our decision to, like, do the building official's job, to say how many they can fit in there, but.
Yeah, that's all done by five.
And, and as far as the parking lot being the "will" or a "maybe" trigger, I mean, that's a big piece of land. And I'm not gonna force somebody else to pave their lot if it triggers something, because we are essentially doing the same thing at our amphitheater. We are gonna park cars for an event on grass or gravel.
Alright, any other discussion? I do have a motion and a second to approve it as is. Uh, yeah, that was the only thing Mike had was that and that, so, as is, again, Mike, roll call vote. No? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Alright, Ken?
Yes.
Vic?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Passes four to one. Thank you. John, what else we got on that?
Uh, nothing on this one. We can move on to the, uh, the next.
Land unit development for Marketplace?
Oh, yep, I believe that, that's correct. Sorry, I got crossed up here.
Yep, alright, go ahead.
I'm just gonna scroll down here. I got some information here. Uh, next item was, uh, prelim and final planned unit development for, um, Marketplace, uh, and Marketplace Annex at one-ten Second Street South, two-thirty Second Avenue South. Um, I think the council members are aware, but, uh, folks in the audience, um, may not know that, uh, in the last year or so, the Marketplace was, uh, sold and purchased, uh, by a local owner. Um, prior to that, it had been a, uh, uh, out-of-town, uh, owner. Uh, that would be Kevin Brink, uh, and he has been working with myself and a couple other staff over the year. Um, six months particularly looking at, uh, a number of upgrades to this property to really, uh, try to breathe some, uh, new life back into it. This property isn't blighted in any way, but it is starting to show its, its age a little bit, and it's probably our largest multi-tenant, uh, retail-type center in town. Uh, Mr. Brink recognizes that, um, there's value in, in, uh, upgrading that, uh, looking at, uh, securing some additional new, new tenants, some of which they've already secured. Um, undertaking some, uh, kinda long simmering, uh, updates and, uh, upkeep projects that have been, uh, put on the back burner by previous owners, but, um, as part of that, really to kinda look at it in a totality and just, and to look at, um, some of what they're looking to do, uh, that requires, uh, what we thought would be a, a good option, is a planned unit development. Uh, the, the properties themselves would remain largely the same manner as they currently are. Uh, nothing is planned, anticipated to be torn down or anything, uh, but several of the deviations that are being required, uh, including the setback requirements for the existing buildings and, uh, total impervious, uh, coverages, those aren't issues under the, under the ordinance. This is, uh, something that, that kinda predates our current ordinances, so a lot of what it is, uh, is fine, is fine under the, under our ordinances. The issue that we're looking at specifically is, um, the parceling off of the, the Fuji Building, the, uh, Smoke Shop and, and, uh, Fitness Supplement Building, and the Starbucks property, which are all on, uh, two pro- two parcels right now. You can see here, you can see the dividing line between the, the properties. You have Fuji and the other building on one with the Marketplace Annex, and then the primary building with the Starbucks on the other one. Uh, part of what they're requesting is to, uh, allow those parcels to be put onto their own properties to kinda, um, make those a little more viable, that should a potential sale come up, that it could be handled, uh, in a more manageable way, that they could be sold independently. There's no, no near term for that, but that is something that, that they're looking to maintain as an option. Uh, the second thing it does is, uh, doing so would help them free up and clear up some, some access and driveline issues. Uh, they, they'd like to look at doing potential drive-up windows for, uh, tenants on the annex side for, uh, uh, to-go service for a drive-through type, type of operation. Uh, and most importantly, uh, perhaps, they would like to look at creating a pad site in the northeast area of the building, um, near, near the access road there. The intent would be that selling that parcel off, uh, to, uh, as yet unidentified, or at least unnamed party, uh, would help fund some of the improvements, uh, of, of the overall building. Uh, you could see that the, in the renderings, I'll go on to those, they include a, a number of significant upgrades. Facade improvements, uh, which would bring them up to kinda current design standards, as well as the, uh, uh, kinda a better blend to the properties nearby, particularly the, uh, Dick's Sporting Good and Fresh Time. You can see here, I'm just gonna scroll across, actually, I'm gonna try to back over this a little bit. The existing architecture and design, uh, again, not in any bad shape, but, uh, these facades and, and updates would, uh, be much more complimentary to, uh, both the adjoining or adjacent building, as well as the other gradual upgrades that have been starting to take place on Second Streets, Second Street South and along Division Street. Uh, the main issue is that the parcels that would be created under the, uh, planned unit development would be a little bit small for the current standard in the area. But as part of a planned unit development, the, the ordinance and council can have the ability to, uh, approve substandard parcels, um, as part of a overall, uh, larger redevelopment plan. I would note that, uh, they are also looking at a, uh, a large, uh, undertaking to update signage, uh, with this project. Uh, I reviewed that with them some time ago. There's nothing in that update that is outside the bounds of the ordinance, so, so I did not include it in here. Uh, we've already approved that sign package as proposed, since it does meet the ordinance. Uh, they'll be taking down a number of old signs, uh, uh, replacing new with some LED dynamic displays to advertise the businesses across the properties. And they also would intend that the permanent, uh, dynamic displays would cut down on some of the use of the, the temporary signs that, uh, are, uh, pretty frequent at some of the businesses, particularly at the corner. So that being said, uh, I would, I, oh, one more thing to note, uh, the, the new pad site would take the, the parking down, uh, by a nominal amount. Uh, the remainder of the parking would not have any, uh, major parking changes. They do have either cross easement agreements in place, or they would have to be created if they do sell off any of the properties at any time. We do allow, uh, the adjacent neighboring businesses to, to, uh, cross utilize parking with agreement, uh, provided they're within three hundred feet of each other. The total parking available, uh, even with the pad site factored in, does continue to exceed the, the minimums, and I wouldn't have any concerns with the parking arrangement. We did that for, um, the mattress firm location, uh, just down the road and without any major issues. Uh, that's been not problematic, also, it'd be pretty much the same. Um, I would be supportive of the, of the request and the, the proposal for the PUD in this case. Um, we have a local owner that wants to, uh, make investment in the community to improve, but I think that, um, that deserves some consideration of flexibility on our part. Uh, the configurations of the property, uh, that require the subdivision below the minimum standards is, uh, that's an issue that was created, uh, time ago and not by the current owner. Uh, so I think, I think it's fair to, to at least consider, uh, allowing that flexibility to, uh, breathe some new life in this property and, and consider the updates. Uh, that, all those being considered, I would, uh, recommend, uh, approval of the preliminary and, and final planned unit development, with the, with the, uh, conditions as outlined in the report. Um, I, the, the only thing we would need to see with this, uh, project, um, assuming approval would be, we'd have to see a final plat. They opted to hold off on that for the time being, but we would need to see that before, um, finalizing everything, but, uh, aside from that, I, I think it's pretty, pretty much ready to go.
Council, any discussion?
I have none. I like it. It's in need of some improvement.
I have none. I like it. It's in need of some improvement.
Yeah, I think it looks nice.
I, this is Vic. I sure agree with that. That, the parking lot and everything needs to be cleaned up a lot and it'll be a really nice addition to repark.
I agree.
All right, with that be, go ahead, Mike.
Uh, I talked to you about this, and you said it would be all right to add it in, was that they make sure that they, when they redo the parking lot, that the lanes of travel are clearly marked and protected, uh, so that there's no over parking into the traffic lanes. Cause that happens quite often, uh, especially when Fuji and that Mexican restaurant and friends get a little busy. They tend to park over into the travel, uh,
Lanes.
Lanes. And, uh, they get blocked off. So if you could put in there some type of, uh, permanent marking, uh, for travel lanes within their parking lot, that sure would be good.
Yeah, and, and for the, for the council, Mike, I would, I'll just note the, the same as we spoke about. Uh, the applicant did, did note that they, they have intent to do that. Uh, so I, I'm comfortable with that, but, uh, they, I mean, they recognize that's just as important for them as it is for us. But, uh, I have no, no concern or issue with adding that as a additional condition if, if the council's more comfortable with it.
I would surely like to see it in there just to prevent some traffic problems in there if they're gonna add more stores and things like that, so.
You wanna move, you wanna move to approve, Mike, with that added on?
Sure.
This is Frank. I'll second.
All right, further discussion? Roll call vote, Mike?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Vic?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Myself, yes. All right. Thank you, John. Item D, vacate Old Township Road.
Uh, I think I think this one's short and sweet for you. This is, this is one that, uh, we saw some from you ago. It's one that we identified we wanted to get rid of. Uh, it just so happens that with the conditional use permit request and the, uh, uh, the timing was kind of right that they submitted a, uh, a, a petition to vacate that Old Township Road. We did have some indication that, uh, looks like it may have been vacated. At least the process was done some years ago when it was in the township, but wasn't able to find any documentation to prove it. So we're just gonna go ahead and, uh, do it properly now. Um, it doesn't impact anyone except those two owners, so we would split it down the middle and, and make it theirs and get it off our rolls. Um, they would, they would have to be, um, both, uh, receptive to the easement agreement. But, uh, the survey that they submitted, they do have a, a easement agreement prepared, so, um, I think the owners are, are good to go. We didn't receive any, any issues from utilities or anything, so I think let's get rid of it.
All right, council, any discussion on that?
That, that other piece of that to the west, that tarred piece?
Mm-hmm.
Is attached at any point there or no?
I don't think they meet. They don't touch each other.
No, no, they don't. That's a, that's a separate piece.
Okay.
I'll move to. Move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Roll call vote, Vic?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Item D, review of emergency declaration.
Um, this is something that I, uh, put on the, oh.
Oh, you're muted, Shawna.
There, sorry.
There you go.
This is something that I-
That's a good, you would've made the need to go shorter.
Uh, yeah. This is something that I had included on your agenda for your consideration. Um, I can certainly pull the resolution up if you'd like. Otherwise, we can just have a discussion. Um, but the, uh, stay-at-home order, as you know, from Governor Walz has been, um, lifted as effective today. Um, and there, I know has been some desire from some of you to consider, uh, looking or having a conversation about your emergency declaration. Um, I did include some additional information in your packets related to that. Um, some of which came from, um, Paul Storm, our city attorney, um, others that came from the League of Minnesota Cities, and then some information from, um, some of the other area cities as well. Um, I did include some information related if we do plan to go back, um, to meeting in person, which is essentially one of the largest things that the emergency declaration does, um, put in place is gives the council the ability to be able to hold, uh, meetings like this. Um, and so I did give you some information related to occupancy. Um, our council chambers, the occupancy is about thirteen, um, to fifteen, depending on how you place a few chairs. Downstairs conference room is about twenty to twenty-five. Um, our upper level conference room has about, um, seven, I believe. Is that what we can hold? Some of the things that the league had suggested is that if, um, the city is willing to look at some of these things, that you might want to consider doing a combination of both, um, which would mean you could have in-person, but you could have others joined by Zoom. I know some cities have chosen to do that. Um, St. Joe uses that method. Um, right now, Sac Rapids and St. Cloud are still meeting virtually and plan to be meeting virtually, and Sartell has been meeting in person. So this is really your item to, for discussion. Um, it's really just, that's the main piece of what the emergency declaration is on. So I know, um, Paul is on as well as myself. If you have any questions, if you'd like to discuss it.
So Paul, this, so if, if, if we would get rid of the emergency declaration, do we still have the authority to do teleconferences like this?
Yes. You would have the ability to do some in-person and some on Zoom, yes.
When you say, is there, is there some kind of number defining that?
I don't have the number. You'd have to have, you'd have, I think you, what you'd have to do is have a majority of your council that would be present at the coun, in the council chambers. Um, and then you would have to, you would have the ability when you notice your meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, on this, but you'd have to notice in your meeting that you're having some that are meeting. That way there are some allowances for us to be able to do that.
Uh, yes, I believe that that's accurate. Uh, it just, you know, the reality is that we're in a situation that no one's ever confronted before. That's gotten to the point of being cliche, but given that, uh, you know, we're, we're in territory where it's not clear exactly what can or can't be done other than if you make the vote, uh, today and choose that you want to go into in-person meetings, the best course I think would be to just make sure that the, uh, opportunity is available for council members to come in remotely, make sure that you have a Zoom option available to them. And we'll just, uh, see how it would go for the first meeting and then calibrate from there.
What if, what if we all say we want to do it by Zoom?
If everybody wants to do it by Zoom, um, then, uh, well, let me see if I understand that correctly. You mean like, let's, let's suggest that there's a scenario where a vote happens today and the council in the vote says, "We would like to resume the option of in-person meetings." And then at some date in the future, all council members say, "I want to come in remotely. I want to come in by Zoom." Is that, that's what you're asking, Mayor?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, that'd be an unusual situation to have, obviously. I think that, I think that if you're going to resume the in-person meetings, then there's going to have to be people in the council chambers. If none of the members of the city council are present and it's only what I'll call the regular attendees, people like, uh, myself, Shawna, uh, Chief Bentrude, it would look strange optically. Uh, I don't, I don't know that it would be something that we'd want to have just from that. But as far as could you, I think that you would be able to, just given that we're in a situation where anybody who can work from home is encouraged to do so. Uh, that's still what we're operating under with the executive order. Uh, so that has to be preserved and if all five said that they wanted to work from home, uh, for the purposes of having a council meeting, I would say that it's, it's, it could be done, given the way that the orders are written. It's purely that it would just look rather unusual. Uh, but, but beyond looking unusual, I don't think there's any reason why that would not be available.
All right, this is, this is Vic. I have a question. Um, what do we gain by keeping the emergency declaration in place? Wh- what's the positive effect of keeping that in place?
I don't know what there is right now. Uh, you know, we did it because in case we had to spend some kind of money, you know, that we couldn't get council together, we could do it. We haven't had to do that. We, we've done a good job of that. Uh, I don't, I don't know if there's an advantage to keep it together right now or not. And, and if we don't, we, can we declare it again if something would happen?
I believe that you would be able to declare it again. Uh, the issue there would just be what reason it's being declared again. So let's say, for example, that, uh, Governor Walz comes out in a couple of weeks and says, "We have attempted to open the state and there's been issues with that," or the rollout has caused something like, uh, as they've talked about in a couple of different media contexts, this idea of a second wave or some sort of return. That could be a basis that would, that would justify, that would explain why you want to bring back the emergency resolution. Uh, if it's, but, uh, you know, outside of the very obvious, I don't know what would, what would trigger the, uh, council's interest in bringing the emergency plan back or bringing the emergency declaration back. Uh, maybe one option would be that for the time being, what you want to do is just contemplate whether or not you want to return to in-person meetings. Cause that, that's not a requirement in any sense. That was something that the council chose to do. But you could do that and make, and we could do a little more, uh, work in the background here to determine, uh, what the pros and cons would be of voting on removing the emergency declaration altogether. Maybe let's, what, go ahead.
Cause the emergency declaration doesn't have anything to do with us meeting in person.
Yeah, right. They're, they're separate things or, you know, one is not necessarily dependent upon the other. So it, to the extent of, you know, why, why do we have it in place right now? Is there a reason for it in place? That's obviously a discussion for the council to have. I can't tell you, uh, why you want to maintain it or not. But I, but definitely, you know, you could deal with the meeting in person or meeting, but like Zoom. Could deal with that and then maybe explore that issue a little further at the next meeting, once they've had an opportunity to kind of look around and help change, given that Governor Walz's order, uh, is, uh, for today, outside, uh, one part of his order.
Well, the governor's order would super, super, uh, our oversee order if we would remove it. Is that right? If we were to remove the emergency. I don't know. Give it a half?
The-
Due to that, it doesn't do anything but declare an emergency maybe for our employees?
The other pieces of the, of the emergency declaration actually have to do with FEMA and the potential of some funding. And that was one of the reasons why we, that, why we put that in place was, and that was encouraged by the League of Minnesota Cities for each individual city to, to declare that emergency, just indicating that. Now, one could argue that, you know, you have a, a state that's declared it and you've got a federal government that's also declared it. But the reality of it is, is that, uh, there are some instances where, when there are federal dollars, um, involved, that if you haven't declared that on your, in your own community, that you may not have that ability to have those funding. Um, the other thing is, is that the, in our emergency declaration, it does give us the ability to meet remotely. That was one of the big things. And it also puts it in place for all of our other boards and commissions as well.
So even with that declaration, we could have been getting in person, seeing that other towns were doing it also?
It was not advisable to be meeting in person. And that was in your emergency declaration that, that you guys approved, that, that we were all going to remote meetings. So the only way that you can no longer be able to meet remotely is if you lift that, um, that's what you'd have to do. Uh, rescind the, if that, if that's the correct terminology, rescind the, um, resolution for the emergency declaration to give you the authority to be able to meet again in person.
There, there isn't any real, I don't, there isn't really any plus or negative. I don't think you need to be keeping it or getting rid of it. In fact, keeping it, you know, there's still money out there from FEMA and some federal government money and, and I'm not quite so sure that if we get rid of it. Like Shawna says, sometimes you look at it and say, well, they didn't, they don't think it's an emergency, so it's not going to get their money. There's some numbers out there that are pretty nice right now. There's, uh, the House and the Senate, I don't remember which one's which, but one's got about a little over four hundred thousand to wait park, one's got a little over six hundred thousand to wait park. And I'd sure like to have that money and not screw it up by saying, well, we got, you don't have an emergency declaration.
Yeah.
The city, you're, you're, they're putting cities like us that may not need the declaration and you're waving the dollar bills in front of us just to keep it, make it look like, uh, we're doing the proper, may not be the proper thing.
Well, basically though, I'm, I guess my question would be with, what's wrong with the, with the declaration? What, what have been wrong with it so far?
Well, I'd like the idea that we need to start meeting, uh, kind of re, uh, person to person myself.
We can do that without the declaration.
Yes. And I don't mind meeting with Zoom. We've done other meetings. It seems to work well, but, um, would it make sense to, to rescind it on June first along with many others? Or is there logical to keep it on past that? I don't understand what would be to gain either by going beyond June first of 2020.
The piece-
Unless the governor changes his mind on June first also.
That's exactly it. I think, you know, if we're gonna let it run, let's, let's let it run. We're gonna meet again in June. Definitely can always make our decisions then.
I could go along with that. I, I don't have a problem, um, as of yet, about keeping it until our June meeting.
I don't know. I think as you said, that as of right now, it just doesn't make sense.
But it might if there's, oh God, half our population of an apartment building, what if something does get into there and we need to set up some kind of medical situation? And because we don't have that declaration there, them funds may not be available to pay them bills.
And always, like Paul said, we can declare it again if it's needed.
No.
Yeah.
I'm not willing to do that. Not when we're this far into it.
I think we beat that, I think we beat it to death. I need a morish and be the, the number one tip, no action, and number two, rescind the declaration.
I vote to rescind the declaration.
I second. Vic?
Any other further discussion? Roll call vote, Mike?
Uh, to rescind, yes.
Ken?
To rescind, no.
Vic?
Yes.
Frank?
No.
And myself, no. I think we should keep it, so.
Me too.
One, just-
Do we need caution? Then there's just no action.
Right. You don't need to take any further action. Just want to make, can I just, I'm sorry for interrupting. But I, I want to just make sure that I'm clear then. That means that our June meeting will be remote, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
No, well.
This army attend us and we can decide again at that point what we do with this.
But this, that emergency declaration has nothing to do with remote meetings.
The in, emergency declaration, let me verify, in the emergency declaration, the, there's language in that that, that does have you meeting remotely. Um, and so if you, you have to-
I had to say some talk so that we could do it to your face.
We can, yeah, according to Paul, we can do it either way.
Yep. So Mike, if you want to go there, that's fine.
Paul?
Is that right, Paul?
I, hold on. So what I was, what I believe that I was, uh, explaining or how I meant to say it was that the, the council could, you know, you could make a decision to try and change something about your emergency declaration, which is just to restore in-person meetings. But that's not, I believe, what we just did here with a vote of, of not rescinding the emergency declaration. In effect, what you said is that the emergency declaration just stays as is. If you wanted to carve out a specific provision of it and say, "This portion of the emergency declaration is what we want to modify. We want to, uh, create the opportunity for in-person meetings," that's the vote that you would have had to have, that you would have to have.
Okay. All right, I, I, I think it was- Go ahead.
I was gonna say, when you passed your resolution, so when this all began, uh, back in March, the first, the first thing that happened was the temporary- the first, the first thing that happened was the temporary order that mayor passed where it was that we're gonna have, uh, meetings remotely till one of the following, uh, a vote or the end of the governor's emergency. And then when you voted, what you voted on was you said that we will continue to have remote meetings until either the end of the governor's emerg, peacetime emergency, or we vote to restore in-person meetings. So if the vote to restore in-person meetings happens, or the governor order terminates, we're still doing remote meetings based on already set up as your, as your, uh, order.
All right. I, I still think it's a good idea that we wait till after the June first, June first of the date. We'll see what happens to the governor that day. We can do a remote meeting. Do you seen the word?
Frank, you're muted. There you go.
Uh.
Frank?
Should we fill out, um, have it on the agenda at our next meeting? So we can at least decide again if we should just rescind it or modify it. And, um, that, I think that'd be good to have something on paper to say if we want to modify.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
To up for in-person.
Yep. Good, good call.
But we have some options there.
Yep.
Okay.
So Paul? Paul?
Yes.
Uh, does that motion expire? It expires after thirty days, the last motion we made, correct?
No.
Uh, just a moment. I'll, I'll read the language and just make sure.
It's a good few days.
The, the last emergency.
Motion. We didn't approve a motion. We took.
We didn't, we just took no action on doing anything with the.
That's how it is.
So your emergency declaration then will only expire upon one or two things happening. You take action on it, or the peacetime emergency that the governor has in place is expired.
I thought it had to do it every thirty days according to.
No, we didn't do that when we passed it. We did it the first time and then the second time we did, we just, we didn't do it that way.
Yep.
So I, I think we beat that horse to death. I think that, that horse isn't gonna run anymore tonight. Uh, item F, resolution approving short-term financing for the amphitheater.
So again, I can share this with you, um, if, if you want, or if you'd prefer to have that. Really essentially what this is, if you recall, um, with our state's grant agreement, um, and for us to be able to do some fundraising, um, there's some additional requirements that we have, um, for some of the larger donations, for them to be able to receive some type of recognition at the site. Um, this is what we had to put in place in order to do it. Um, and essentially what it is, is, um, it's us working with Falcon National Bank. Falcon National Bank is one of our major sponsors that will be moving forward. Um, essentially what we are looking, um, at doing is a short-term loan with them, um, that essentially will be for the amount of whatever we get back, up to five hundred thousand dollars in donations. So we've got two major donations right now. If those are the only two that there are, um, it's, uh, we will utilize those two and use those dollars that come in to pay off this loan, which then essentially gives us the ability to provide them naming rights. It's really the only mechanism in place that does that. If, if we don't utilize something like this and utilize it for incurring of some debt, um, there's really no way for us to be able to accept, um, major donations like this and give them the recognition that they are requesting for their size of donations. And the reason for that is really because the state has, um, their bonds are ta, are non-taxable. They're exempt bonds. Um, and so that's, that's what's in place. So, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions about it. But essentially what we are, um, requesting of the council for this evening is to pass a resolution, um, that is attached, uh, that would be considering this financing option.
Council, any questions?
I'm ready to make the motion to approve this resolution.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Yes. I just have a quick question. Um, the way, way the businesses are right now in terms of making, having income, are you sure that these, um, companies that you have on the line who are willing to contribute, um, are still going to be financially stable to do that? So we're not running a, a, um, a liability for the city that we may not be able to pay back?
We are not going to be having a liability run unless we have those in, in place. So this is just the amount, Vic, that we can go up to, but we don't incur any of that until we have that in place. And so.
And to answer your question, the last time we talked to those major sponsors, they were still on board.
Yes.
Too long ago.
No.
That was, that was during this pandemic, so.
Okay. I was just curious.
Yep.
As far as I'm concerned, you went borrow the money until you got their check in hand.
That's correct.
That's exactly.
Essentially, it's just, it, it's like having a line of credit that we, that we know is there for us when we need it, up to that amount.
All right. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Mike?
Yeah.
Ken?
Yep.
Vic?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Still, yes. Passes five to nothing. All right. F and G, consider fencing for the amphitheater.
Quick, quick question. Just been, uh, uh, when are we planning on opening up City Hall under this pandemic thing then?
Well, let's get rid of, uh, let's get rid of, let's get rid of Mr. Ortell. He's probably about ready to fall asleep over there soon. And we can talk about it after that, Mike, okay?
All right.
All right. I'm gonna pull up this agenda item, so bear with me, cause I, uh, um, uh, let's see. Do you see this?
Yep.
All right. All right. Okay. Cause I just don't see you guys anymore, but that's okay. Um, all right. So I'm gonna, I'll maybe just start off a little bit, and then I have Jeff here, um, as well. Um, Jeff, maybe why don't you start by just talking about the, um, where we are today with switching gears from the, um, gabion basket walls to where we're at tonight for discussion? Would you mind doing that while I?
I'd be happy to. Maybe I take a quick step back and just say that, um, at the time of bidding and contract award, we had three types of fencing engaged. We had the gabion baskets. We had aluminum trains who were put on and, and we had a chain. Last, at last fall, we asked the contractor to put up a sample gabion basket. And the contractor in this case was required to do a design build of that and engineering, hiring an engineer, which they did. And with the help of city staff and Bill, um, they made that gabion basket. And, uh, it looked okay. It looked decent at the beginning, but when it sprained him, the, uh, the whole, uh, wall moved and it tipped one way, it tipped another way. And we collectively could not accept the spade nor the liability, uh, if, uh, if something would happen in the future. So, uh, he did. I think I, okay. Uh, what we did then is, uh, came up with other ideas and Bill specifically saw a, uh, uh, element, design element that was similar to the gabion baskets, but that is similar. Uh, this basket, uh, is about two foot by two foot, uh, in plan and about eighty high. And unlike the gabion baskets, uh, and if you've seen the gabion basket that was out there that Bill, um, it doesn't have as much, I have to do it. And the new product that Bill found, uh, is a lot of angle iron, uh, and the mesh on it is incredibly, uh, beefier than what the gabion baskets were. The whole thing to do now is to provide these vertical, what we call vertical columns, basically, that the baskets filled with stone. Uh, and they're located at the, on the map where the red, little red circles are. And we get to really commit to a product that would have between, um, uh, we might be looking at a combination of wood, wood on aluminum, uh, it could be a, a book like, uh, raw iron. We really aren't there. We, we really want to get the footings for these columns and so that the contractor can get all that class of concrete for the very near future. The contractor, he's really done some, paid effort, uh, paid some great efforts in getting all that concrete work done in a fairly short period of time. So we'd like to get these baskets, uh, up. And later on, uh, we can, uh, figure out what we want to put in between the two, uh, between the vertical columns.
Hey, they look nice. I see the one, I got, we got the picture of it in our package and it, to me, it looks like it would fit into that situation out there pretty nice. So, well, what type of fencing? You were talking about wood with a layer? I think, uh, I don't know if we want to do any wood at all.
Well, we, uh, we had wood in, um, it was a part of the gates and a part of the, some of the fixed pieces, uh, where the, there was a aluminum frame, uh, and, and it was relatively substantial because there's a lot of moment and a lot of, of force on the end of those gates. And the wood was on as more of an aesthetic, it, it was, uh, horizontal boards that were applied to the aluminum gates. And it was an aesthetic issue then, and maybe Shawna would want to address it more. Right now, there's nothing a hundred percent firm about sticking with those gates versus, uh, any other.
Product that we.
What, what we're, what we would be looking at doing is bringing the other fencing option back to you that we get determined here. I would assume that'd be the first part of June for that. Um, what we're looking at, just to be clear on that, and, and what was included in your information, um, is that we would actually be taking all of the gates and the fencing out of the contract. Um, and there's a substantial credit, um, uh, for that. I don't have the number right in front of me at the top of my head. Jeff, do you recall what that number was?
You heard that. For just the aluminum frames, it was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, the wood component was much less. Um, it seemed to me it was ten thou, ten thousand, but it was a hundred and twenty thousand for the aluminum components.
I think a total of a hundred and fifty-five, if I, if I remember correctly.
Yeah. And that includes the, um, there's some perforated metal panels that.
And the idea behind this is that, um, for us making some of these changes, well, I do believe that the contractor has some responsibility with this, that we're going to get better, um, estimates on the costs if we take this out. Um, we're gonna end up paying more for it, leaving it in the contract and changing it.
How about the other fencing along the quarry there?
That's all going, that's all gonna be coming back. The, now you're talking along the quarry, that's railing and that is not part of this. This is just the exterior perimeter fencing, Mike.
To the entrance.
Yeah. It, it, around the exterior, just the railing is the pieces that are part, around the quarry on the interior. So this is just the outside fencing and gates.
Shawna, I have a question this morning.
Yep.
So is that contractor, when you say remove it all, is that contractor still gonna make or to make the aluminum frames that were the doors, gonna be the, the shell of the doors?
No. The idea, Frank, is to take away all the fencing and gate and hardware installation from them. And then, uh, hire the local contractor to install the vertical column baskets. And then, uh, when B and U decide what the infill pieces will be, uh, that'll be a separate contract.
Yeah, because if you're not talking about cedar, you are adding substantial weight to them doors.
I think we would be, we talked about that, Frank. Um.
It'll be heavy.
Yeah. Yep. We talked about that. I think there's going to be, it's, we'll come back with it. I think we've got some ideas, but we're meeting this week to kind of finalize some of those things. The biggest concern for us right now is, is if you, if you're interested in moving forward, the direction that we need now is we've got to get the, the, we have to make a decision on those pillars, uh, because we've got to get those concrete footings in place to be able to do that. And in your.
That was a thousand or eleven hundred or something?
The, the pillars, um, I think total, we're estimating just under thirty thousand dollars for all of those shown in red.
For all of them?
Yeah. That's including the footings for them as well.
So there's no more discussion or we, we want to move to approve that we move forward with the, the loop proposed baskets?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, I think.
I'll second.
Who made the motion?
My dad.
I got a question yet too.
Okay. Ken?
Ken made it. Frank seconded. Now discussion.
Well, I didn't second. Vic seconded, but.
Okay.
When we make this motion, we are including removing this from the contract, correct?
Yes.
That's.
And then shifting it and having the columns and, okay. I'm good.
Any other discussion? All right. Roll call vote. Mike? Ken?
Yes.
Vic?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Yourself, yes. All right. Thanks. Thanks, Jeff. Let's see. What else we got? Hey, Waske, hey, Waske, wake up. Oh, Mike, you had a question. You had to bring something up.
Yeah. Uh, back to urgency, uh, thing. When are we planning to open up City Hall?
We.
Uh, we've relaxed all those, uh, requirements. I think we have adequate room and with the proper following of the rules, I think we should be able to open up.
And we certainly intend to. Um, we are also working in conjunction, um, with the requirements of, um, that we need to put in place in order to do that. And then we've also tried to work with the other area cities. We had hoped that if we all tried to do that at the same time with all of the types of facilities that we have, and we're looking at June first.
Uh, pretty simple as to what needs to be done.
There's more to it, Mike, than what I, I think.
It sounds, there still has to be spacing in between there and stuff. I don't, I don't see any big hurtness opening up City Hall, so I, I, I don't think two weeks is gonna make a difference, make or break anybody. Like the rest of this, they're on board with that, so.
And there's, there are some cities that, uh, they might open later than that, but that, that's what we have talked about as a, as a group. I have, um, worked with the department heads and the mayor, uh, looking at, um, all of our, the facility stuff that we have. And I'm just finishing putting together, um, an updated information that, um, talks about all the facilities that we have based off of where we're at with the governor's order that, um, will be sent out hopefully by tomorrow. But it, it takes into account information that we've gotten from Paul, um, from the league and from the other area cities. Um, so it's talking about all of those facilities and kind of where we're at based off of what the governor's order says today. Um, and so we're basing all of that off. There's not a lot of cities that I know that are opening up this soon. And, and so I, there are some, there are some things that we still need to do, and I need to spend some time on that. And that's going to take me some time to do that.
Well, like I said, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. And I think.
Well, you gotta have a plan before you open.
Huh?
You have, you have a plan before you open.
Could you have one?
Uh, I think we beat the hours to death to approve bills.
I'm moved to pay the bills.
Got a question on a couple of them there. Go.
Can we get a second first?
Give me a second first, yeah.
This is Vic. Can you get a second?
All right. Now discussion.
Uh, there is a couple of problems, Jeff. Do you have a, down here? I thought we put all that on hold.
You have a few of your CIP ones that would have came, um, through that would have been before we made those changes.
Uh, they were in.
Air comp, yeah, they were the, there was one that was March. If you're talking about the air compressor, that was the one that I'm aware of, that, that was the end of March. So some of these things have been ordered and it's a matter of when we've gotten the invoices, so, um, those things, there, there's, it's very clear now, no one, we're not doing any of the other CIP things at this present time.
All right. All right. Any other discussion? All right. Roll call vote. Mike?
Yeah.
Ken?
Yeah.
Yes.
Vic? Vic?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Michelle, yes, uh, other business, just for curiosity, uh, this, this worked all right, everybody could hear, Vic, you could hear all right?
Yeah, I hear fairly well, but the problem is, the problem is they don't say here's the height of the building, then it's very distant, and I really have to struggle with that.
Yep, okay.
Does that bother?
The process was good, man. All right, good. Do you have any other business? Shawna, did you get those two letters?
Yep. I, yeah, I do, um, the mayor asked, he, he received, uh, two thank you letters, and so I'm gonna go ahead and read them. One is from Wakosa, um, and it says, City of Wait Park, thank you once again for your ongoing support and generous donation. From your gambling funds, your donation will improve the safety of the city's most fragile residents, individuals with disabilities and high medical needs to purchase a hydraulic mat table for positioning therapies and transitioning, thank you for making a difference and improving lives, Carrie. Um, and then we received another, a letter from Terabent Refuge, and it says, uh, dear City of Wait Park, I would like to once again express my sincere gratefulness to you for selecting Terabent Refuge as recipients of your grant funds of ten thousand dollars for our program, the funding will assist us in providing the holistic healing and programming for the women we serve. All the various types of support we have received from the City of Wait Park is simply amazing to me, the city has been a huge part in the success we have had thus far as a nonprofit. We are honored to be a recipient, a partner with, and a community member of the City of Wait Park. Thank you for having the hearts to pour into the women we serve, thank you, sincerely, C.C. Turlow.
All right, uh, public input, we didn't have public input this, uh, because we didn't have a work session in whatever, so I don't know, is there anybody, is there anybody out there from the public that would like to speak at this time for two minutes?
We, we have had a couple of people join us, Kevin Brink, I I believe he might have joined for Marketplace, and then another gentleman, and I can't seem to see his name. Um, and I don't know that he's still on here.
Kevin Brink, I sent a chat privately to let him know that.
Got it.
His item was approved, he had a condition, so he may have run out after that.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, Shawna.
Mike?
Shawna?
Yep.
Um, I see in the paper that you're supposed to file, if you wanna file for running for city position.
Uh, no.
Not only, not a, not a.
We don't have a primary.
Yeah, we, in fact, we're, we're filing until the end of July, July twenty eighth, it's. The little papers today, I'm wondering.
Yeah. Some cities.
Anybody that has a primary. I was, yeah, I don't know what it was for, but. All right, Shawna, you got anything?
I don't.
Carrie, you got anything, you've been there all night, still awake?
Yes, I do, Mayor, uh, I've been sitting here for about an hour and a half, waiting for that sunset to go down behind Ken, and he's not going. Must be in Alaska.
No, that's actually, uh, that's up in Canada.
How, how is the project going on second speed?
Well, I, I'd like to give you the details, Vic, uh, my colleague is actually running that show now, um, and so Bill can probably fill it in.
It's going well, so, we're moving down the road.
We had a minor gas leak last week, but that got taken care of, and we're back on track.
Great, it didn't sound minor on the radio.
It might not have been that small, but we took care of it.
There you go, anything else from anybody?
I got some things.
Phil?
Um, so, with the City Hall smoke incident, I don't know if you all heard, but it was a, a blower motor in the furnace in the lower level. Um, that's what happened, uh, we got a new one coming, but it's gonna be another week or so, uh, so no danger to the staff. Uh, secondly, um, Public Works received a really nice thank you from Danny Westra, the couple out in Angus Acres for us picking up their brush, um, that was really nice, a nice comment from him, and there was one more thing.
Large item pickup.
Oh, there, thank you, Shawna, yeah, uh, Jeff Virgin sent me an email this morning, or this afternoon, and our large item pickup is gonna be July eleventh. Um, I asked him if it could be any sooner, and he said no, um, he's got them all programmed out right now, so, uh, July eleventh, and we'll get that out there on the website, so. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, sounds good, anybody else?
Well, these are burning like brayers, huh?
Yeah, right, yeah, their city hall is burnt, burnt out today, not all up, the four percent, but had actual flames coming out of the roof this week today.
Wow.
All right, if nothing else, we are adjourned at seven forty-five.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye.
Stay well, stay well.
Microphone muted.